Everyone take your seats, please. We're gonna start. Good evening, everyone. I'm calling the meeting to order. We're gonna start with a pledge allegiance. Mr. Bello, would you like to lead us in pledge allegiance? Rabbi Baron?
Vice Mayor, before we continue, I need to take roll call.
Oh, sorry.
Please. Commissioner Goldman?
Here.
Commissioner Lama?
Here.
Commissioner Viscara?
Here.
Mayor Sholdes absent. Vice Mayor Svechn?
Here.
We have a quorum out.
Great. Invocation?
Good evening. "I have come to my garden," it says in Songs of Songs, referring to God's presence in this world. This world is God's garden. It was then left to Adam and Eve to tend and watch it. Humanity was charged by God to tend and watch this garden. Adam was given seven universal laws of humanity. Later, this was reaffirmed to Noah and then to Moses at Mount Sinai to share with all humanity. Almighty God, the Sunny Isles Beach Commission has convened tonight as per your command to set up and organize government with law and order. Please allow us to see beauty in your garden. Almighty God, we rely on your blessings so that we see the fruit of our labor as we tend to your garden. We are mindful of the fact that you have blessed this city with wonderful leadership, direction, dedication, and guiding spirit which has resulted in the many successful achievements over the last 21 years. And we praise you for this. With appreciation for all these blessings, we ask and pray for your continued blessings upon our elected officials, police department, and city staff to make the right decisions with honesty, integrity, and knowledge for all of our citizens into the future. And may they continue to serve as positive role models for a beautiful community. Almighty God, bless everyone here this evening with good health, peace of mind, and prosperity. Almighty God, in these times, we do not take our safety and security for granted. Protect our police force, our servicemen and women serving domestically and overseas in the name of freedom and democracy. Please give them the peace of mind, insight, and intuition to be successful. May everyone here and all the residents of Sunny Isles Beach be granted the understanding that we are most fortunate to be living here in such a beautiful place, filled with such good people, and governed by such an outstanding municipal government. Amen.
Thank you, Rabbi Baron. Item three, approval of amendments. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Mike, roll the tape.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome and thank you for being here tonight. Please turn off or mute any electronic devices to avoid interrupting these proceedings. In all issues that come before the City Commission, we ask that everyone show mutual respect for one another by listening quietly to each person speaking and that everyone refrain from any clapping, heckling, or verbal outbursts in favor or in opposition to a speaker. Individuals that do not adhere to Chapter 74, Rules of Procedure of the Code, particularly Section 74-21 decorum, shall be barred from further appearance before the commission. Individuals who want to speak on any item on the agenda are asked to fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. Speakers are asked to speak to the issues, make comments concise and to the point, and refrain from making duplicate comments. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. If you speak out of turn without permission from the chair and/or do not cease speaking after one warning, you will be escorted out of the chambers.
Yes. So we are on item 4A. We have changes to tonight's agenda. For the resolutions, we have a deferral on item 10E, which is the public art donation agreement with PMG S2 Sunny Isles LLC. We have an add-on item 10K, which is in agreement with Temple Inc. to provide additional enhancements to the rectangular rapid flashing beaking assembly products. Add-on item number 10L, which is approving an amendment to Section 503.1 of the city's personnel policy, which has to do with the retirement benefits. And add-on item number 10M, which is appointing Julia Garkova as interim city attorney and Latoya Brown as interim deputy city attorney pending the appointment of a permanent city attorney. I need a motion.
So move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item five, the special presentations. I probably all wonder why there's so many people here. I am thrilled to be acknowledging our many youth sports teams that have become champions this past season and so that we can get the girls volleyball team out fastest because I know they have a practice right now. We're gonna start with the volleyball team. But before that, I just wanna say that we are known as the city and really the school that have very high academics. That's probably one of the biggest reasons that people move to this city. So it is really wonderful that now we're being known also as a city with achievement in athletics. And I appreciate the parents, the coaches, and the support of our principal, Dr. Koznitzky. Our new vice principal that's here, Stan, please, Mr. Stanton. And Mr. Bello here is from the district. We really appreciate the support. Actually, there's one more thing. In support of the commission, the Sunny Isles Beach PTSA is also going to present everyone here with a small gift to make sure that at the next game or event, you guys are gonna show up with your school spirits. So I think we have Mauricio here from the PTA and Fabiola who's here. You wanna come and help her, please? Thank you. Thank you, PTA. Mauricio, would you please call the names of the recipients?
Sure. I'm gonna call each student's name. If you can just please come up as I call your name, I'll hand you over your certificate. And I apologize in advance if I mispronounce any of your names. And if there's any misspellings on the certificates, please just give my office a call tomorrow and we'll be sure to make the corrections.
And volleyball team, please stay up here when your name is called so we can take a picture with you girls first.
Okay. Sophia Kamara. Rachel Campaioni. Maya Duarte. Rosalind De Leon. Brianna Fernandez. Sylvia Fernandez. Estefania Glazer. Michaela Montarse. Anna Paiva. Sofia Perez. Alana Salcedo Ferral. Manuela Vasconceres. Emma Vascones. Lara Zima. Luisa Zima. Anita Lerner. And the coach Larissa Ramirez.
Coach Bonkowski. Coach Bonkowski? Did we miss anyone? Okay, and just so I'm... All right. Next, we're gonna call up the soccer under eight. Please come up as your name is called.
Daniel Cohen. Holden Gardner. Vanya Hildrew. Alexandra Kamenka.
Mauricio, they're little kids. Just give them a chance.
Vanya Hildrew. Alexander Kamenka. David Masarski. David Montoya. Jaden Perry. Oliver Polin. Jaden Perry. David Montoya. And coach? Commissioners? Okay, we're gonna continue with the under eight boys and girls select soccer team. We'll start with Coach Pedro Crew. Lucas Alvarez. Leonardo Donato. Alexander Halavenka. Daniela Ibanez. Ron Cashini. Oleg Levin. Dario Lombardo. Matthew Marchand. And Lucas Suarez. Is there someone else missing? Andre Najad. Okay, now we'll move on to... So now we're gonna move on with the advanced cheer program. We'll start with the coaches. Brittany Crawford. Natasha Gibson. Gabrielle Mills. And Brianna Suprasad. So Alexandra Borcevic. Daria Borcevic. Ariana Kaemo. Sofia Sebrian. Stephanie Davis. Kendall Fulgate. Victoria Georgiev. Misha Hildrew. Maya Livak. Kristina Marogulova. Edwarta Mota. Jael Schwartzman. Tata Monica Shalutashivli. Susana Turina. And Rochelle Weisberg. Emmanuela... Emmanuela Kalitza.
Well, I would love everyone to stay. We're gonna take a five-minute recess. Anyone that's staying, stay. Anyone that's leaving, thank you for coming. Okay, we're going to start. If everyone could take a seat, please. Thank you, everyone that's staying. Item 6A, six for zoning, 6A. Mauricio?
Yes. Vice Mayor, this item is a zoning item. However, the applicant has requested a deferral and Claudia will report.
Mr. Philip Aginski, the applicant for the project GPI, has requested a deferral to present the item or continue this item on March 21st, 2019.
Thank you. Okay, seven, ordinances for first reading.
There's no ordinances for first reading. We can move down to item nine, which is ordinance for second reading. So item 9A, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach. So, item 9A, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, amending section 201-8H of the City Code of Ordinances to prohibit the use of dangerous objects and the unauthorized use of unmanned aerial vehicles in city parks and recreation areas. Providing for repealer, providing for survivability, providing for inclusion in the City Code, providing for an effective date, and this is second reading.
Okay.
Vice Mayor, the previous item, the deferral, I think you have to take a vote to have this item deferred.
We do. Okay.
I'm sorry, I missed that. What was that?
The previous item, the deferral of the zoning hearing, I think you have to take the vote to have this item actually deferred.
Okay. Thank you, Julia. Second.
And it's a roll call, so Commissioner Goldman? Commissioner Lama? Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw is absent. Vice Mayor Sfatchen?
Yes.
The item is deferred to March 21st, 2019. So we're on item 9A. Already read into the record.
Yes.
Vice Mayor, members of the Commission, this is a second reading of an ordinance that will allow for some safer use of our parks.
Are there any questions or comments? Mauricio?
Motion. A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And it's a roll call. Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw is absent. Vice Mayor?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Okay. Now we're down to resolutions.
10A is a resolution approving a First Amendment to the agreement with Moore Stevens Lovelace for professional auditing services.
Vice Mayor and Commission, this is a First Amendment that staff is requesting your approval to renew a contract with MSL for professional auditing services in the amount of $42,500. Back in 2016, we entered into a three-year contract with them to audit our books for 2016, 2017, and now we're in the final stages of 2018, so we are recommending to renew their contract for an additional year for the amount stated for our fiscal year 2019 books, and so there's one more renewal remaining after this one.
Thank you, Tiffany. Any questions? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. 10B?
A resolution approving a Second Amendment to the agreement with O'Leary Richards Design Associates, Inc. for landscape architect services.
Vice Mayor and Commissioners, this is a second, one-year renewal out of four terms, optional. The service actually includes building permit reviews, site plan reviews, special projects, and monthly landscaping inspection. The item that you have in front of you has been revised. Instead of $65,000, we are requesting for $120,000 for the year.
Are there any questions? Motion to approve? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
10C?
A resolution approving a Second Amendment to the agreement with Calvin Giordano Associates for professional planning and consulting services.
This contract is also the second renewal out of four options. These contracts include services for plan review, also site plan, which include recovery costs. Basically, the applicant is covering those, and for special projects and planning studies. And the total amount is for $150,000.
Thank you, Claudia. Are there any questions? Motion to approve?
Thank you.
Second.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
10D?
A resolution approving an increase in spending authority with Calvin Giordano Associates for the Newport Pier Cleanup Services.
That's just a, that's a routine service that we're obligated to provide under the environmental requirements of cleaning quarterly the bed of the water underneath the pier for any debris and things, and they send divers in quarterly for this, and they provide that service.
Since we have people in the audience, clarify this where they get out all the fishing wire and everything else that gets dropped from the fishermen. Are there any questions? Motion to approve?
All in favor?
Aye.
10E?
10E has been deferred.
10F?
10F is a resolution entering into an agreement with the Town of Golden Beach and its police department to share police reporting and records management software and information technology services.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. This is our agreement with the Town of Golden Beach. We provide them support services for IT, for managing their police CAD and records management system. So, they've...
Motion to approve? Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Right.
10G?
10G?
Is a resolution approving the expenditure of budgeted funds for the lease of three new copier-scanner printers from Tzuva Business Solutions, Florida.
Okay. Vice Mayor, Commissioners, this is the replacement of three of our copiers. We're going to lease them this time around. We feel it's a better value. We've been having issues with maintenance with the existing copiers. So, this is a lease for three copiers, and the amount that we normally spend for the per-copy charges for maintenance of all of the copiers that we own.
Great, great. Thank you. Any questions? Motion to approve? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
10H?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of 15 bus shelters from Toller Manufacturing.
Honorable Vice Mayor and City Commission, this item is to purchase 15 brand-new bus shelters to replace 15 that are primarily on Collins Avenue, and in so doing, we'll also relocate them back to allow for more sidewalk space.
Great. Thank you, Susan. Motion to approve?
I had a, I actually had a question.
Go for it.
The bus stops that we currently have, they have a solar component for the lighting?
They do.
And can we, when we revisit this, see if there's, maybe we can add, there's like bus stations with charging stations or to help people like charge their phones before...
So, our current solar light system will not allow us to add the phone charging station, so we would have to replace the solar light component as well, or add a totally separate thing, and then we could do it. We have to look and see if clay is here, if the structure could hold two solar panels, or replace the other one.
If we could look into that when we're revisiting that.
Yes, I'll report back. Thanks.
Thank you, Susan.
Excellent. Motion was made. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
10I?
A resolution ranking the submittals for consulting engineering services for Golden Shores Pump Station rehabilitation in response to request for qualifications number 181101, and authorizing the city manager to begin negotiations with the top-ranked firm.
Right. This is for the rehabilitation of the Golden Shores Pump Station. It's been over 15 years since we last did this, and it's badly in need of upgrading. The ranking of the engineers are Calvin Giordano Associates 1, CES Consultants 2, and CAS Craig A. Smith &amp; Associates as number 3.
Are there no questions? Motion to approve? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And 10J?
A resolution approving a parking license agreement between the City of Sunny Isles Beach and Regalia Beach Developers LLC for the use of a portion of a parking lot under Lehman Cosway.
Vice Mayor, Members of the Commission, this is a parking agreement between the city and Regalia. It's for 20 spaces, three-year agreement, $5,000 a month with a 3% escalator per year.
Thank you, Stan. Are there no questions? Motion to approve?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Right. 10K?
10K is a resolution approving an agreement with Temple, Inc. to provide the additional enhancements to the rectangular rapid flashing beacon assembly products to include the purchase and installation of traffic equipment and accessories.
Honorable Vice Mayor and Commission, these are flashing beacons, both in the roadway and on the, you know, a pi that people will press to cross at 172 St. North Bay Road, where all of that pedestrian traffic is coming off the pedestrian emergency bridge. And there's a second one just a little bit further down, so there will be two crosswalks, flashing lights, both directions, so that people will, cars will see people crossing.
Yes.
We had to use this company because they are approved by both the county and the state. Genesis did a great job of finding a company that was, that we could piggyback from, that met all of the criteria.
This would be the same as the crosswalks that we have at William Lehman?
It'll be better, because it'll also have the flashing ones on the ground.
Right.
So if you've been through Bow Harbor, they have them.
That's great. Thank you, Susan. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Motion to approve? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
10L?
10L is a resolution approving an amendment to section 5031 titled Retirement Benefits of the City's Personnel Policy Manual.
This is specifically in addition to our retiree health insurance to add a new section that provides for health benefits for city charter officers as designated by the Sunny Isles Beach Charter, and it would be eligibility after 15 years of service, and it would be at the charter officer's own expense. Pretty much, that's it with a couple of terms in here, and it's a small change to the policy.
Are there any comments, questions? Need a motion?
Vice Mayor, is there a public speaker?
No, I have a 10M speaker.
10M?
Honorable Vice Mayor, my name is Ben Brodsky.
You signed up for 10M?
I'd like with the Commission's permission to address both 10L and 10M at the same time.
Sure.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak, Honorable Vice Mayor, the Commission. My name is Ben Brodsky, and I'm here on behalf of my friend Hans Ottenot, who I'm also honored to call my client tonight. I'm a Florida bar-registered attorney, and I've actually done some work on behalf of the city in the past. And I'm here on behalf of Mr. Ottenot, who has served with distinction for 19 years with the city, 14 years as the city attorney. And I had the opportunity to watch Mr. Ottenot advocate and guide and act on behalf of the city, and he did so truly with dignity and capability, and helped counsel the city through its incredible growth. And a lot of that is because of Mr. Ottenot, and I think the city owes him a debt of gratitude for that. Now, Mr. Ottenot had retired from his position as the city attorney on January 4th, effective February 7th. Yesterday, at a workshop meeting, the City Commission, I think in an unofficial capacity, relieved Mr. Ottenot of his duties. And so, the first request I would make of the Commission is for a motion to clarify Mr. Ottenot's status, whether he is currently still the city attorney, whether his retirement is going to be honored, or whether the city is going to take a different position on how his employment was concluded with the city.
Mr. Brodsky, I think we're, right now, we're on this item, which is a change in the policy.
Sure. I guess the, the second item I would request, which relates to this item, and I'll circle back to M when we reach it, is clarification from the Commission as to whether Mr. Ottenot will be entitled to participate in the retirement health plan as a retiree, at no cost to the city, such that he will be able to have health insurance for his family that he has earned, that he deserves, and that his family needs. So I would request that the Commission, please, one of the Commissioners make a motion to confirm that Mr. Ottenot will be entitled to participate in that plan as a retiree.
I'll, I'll serve that motion, and I'd like to also add that the decision to relieve Mr. Ottenot was not a unanimous decision, and there was a lot of, there was some debate about that. So, but I would, I would make that motion, if that's possible. Can I make that motion?
Well, we're in the middle of discussing the item on an agenda, so we should finish with this item, and then if the Commission would like to make a motion, you can proceed then.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Okay, so is there any discussion for this resolution? No?
On the, on...
On 10L?
Can we, have we read through the record what that, this resolution, fully? Just to clarify what this, what this, what is stipulated in this?
The entire resolution? You want us to read the entire resolution?
No, this is the Personnel Manual. About the eligibility criteria.
Right.
Have we clarified what the, what that is?
Yes, I believe we did. Do you want, do you want Chris to repeat it?
Read it in the record?
Yes, I'd like to read it into the record, this, this resolution. Those, those items that were modified.
Yeah. This is what's modified in this section. It says, "In addition to the eligibility provisions stated above," and then there's eligibility, "the city's charter officers as designated by the City of Sunny Isles Beach Municipal Charter may be eligible for retiree health insurance if they meet all of the following criteria. One, voluntary separation of service, cannot be in lieu of termination or while under investigation. Two, must have a minimum of 15 years of service with the city and be in a charter officer position upon separation." And then all other terms and conditions that set forth here in this section in full force and effect. And there's other requirements that the charter officers will have to meet that standard in here.
But that's the only change? Those two items are the only change to the policy?
Those, those are the only changes.
Okay.
It supersedes the age and number of years for other employees, and makes this specific for charter officers.
Not requiring the official retirement?
Right.
Exactly. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yes, I just wanted that read into the record, what were the changes of the, just so that we have a public record of that, that this...
Great. Thank you for requesting that. Is there any more discussion?
No, I'd like to move to approve this.
Make your motion.
So move, move to approve this resolution. Second.
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner, for just for clarity purposes, that this policy, since I tendered my retirement on January 4th and effective February 7th, that this new policy that I'm eligible to participate with no, because I think I meet all those conditions. I retire, and I've served more than 15 years.
For what it's worth, and this was the absolute, yeah, for what it's, for what it's worth...
Hold on a second.
I, my opinion absolutely is that this policy that we're changing absolutely includes Hansa's situation.
Julia, do we need to make a motion to clarify this? I'm asking you.
If there is a motion, it needs to be clearly stated on the record. So if you would like to make additional motion to clarify?
Guys, I'd like to make a motion to clarify that this, this applies, notwithstanding if there was, you know, any discussion about relieving of duties, that your, your employment is, is currently valid and effective, and that this resolution applies.
Yeah, second?
Second.
Mauricio?
Wait.
There's a second and a motion.
Well, that was just a clarification.
No, I understand, but should we be sticking to our agenda and not be adding to the agenda?
This is, this is not an add-on. This is a friendly motion. This is, this is not an add-on, this is a friendly motion that was made by Commissioner Goldman's second, and, and procedurally is called for a vote.
You can make a motion during the, during the city commission meeting. Just want to make sure it's clear on the record what the motion is. Is it a motion to amend this item, or it's a motion?
No, it's a motion to clarify that I'm eligible for.
Okay.
Which Commissioner Goldman?
Okay, so if, just for the record, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to clarify that this resolution, uh, once adopted, that it, it is effective immediately, and it, and it, and it's valid and enforceable as to, uh, the current charter position, uh, held by, uh, Mr. Ottenot.
And I would be entitled to protest.
And that, that Mr. Ottenot is, would be entitled to the, to the, to the retirement benefits that are, that are afforded through, through this resolution.
Okay, can I just correct that, uh, Commissioner Goldman? These resolutions are going to be enacted once the mayor returns and signs them.
Yeah.
When is the, will the mayor be returning? I mean, how long will he be out of the country until?
Sunday, Monday, Wednesday? Monday.
Okay, so it's effective, it will be effective during...
Commissioner Goldman, uh, there was a motion on the floor, a second, and this body has authority to make it effective immediately. You, you don't have to wait until anyone. So I just want to make sure that from a legal perspective, you at least understand that what the motion and the second, uh, procedurally, yeah, a vote should have been taken.
So it's effective upon the adoption by the current commission? That's, that's, it's not effective once the mayor signs? It's effective upon adoption? Is that, I'm, I'm asking for clarification.
Yeah, I think that this has gotten all muddied, because that's not the clarification that I understood you had made.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I mean, what I understood was you were asking to, for it to be clear that once this is in effect, then it will apply to you, and, which I think the city manager made very clear that it would apply to you. And that's, that's the clarification that I thought you were making, and that's the clar, that's the, what, what I seconded. I just wanted to hear that.
Okay, that's fine.
Sure, sure, that's fine.
That's fine.
As long as we're on the same page.
We're on the same page.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, that's fine.
Thanks.
So do we need to repeat the clarification, or are you ready to take the vote?
Yeah, I'd like you to repeat the clarification, please.
For the record. The resolution was passed as it was written.
Mm-hmm.
Now there's a separate motion on the floor, and I need clarification on that motion.
So the motion is that this resolution is effective as to...
The policy.
The policy is effective as to the, uh, the charter position held by, um, Mr. Ottenot?
That's already written.
Okay, I just, just want to...
Yeah, Commissioner, Commissioner Viscaro, the reason, the reason, just the clarity, uh, that I'm seeking, so you know, there's, there's language in this policy that's somewhat broad and somewhat vague.
Okay.
And if you look at, you know, it say it cannot be in lieu of termination while under investigation. So just to make sure that that language, you know, I think Chris, it applies to me, and that language, you know, because it, it, it's very broad.
Yeah, let, let, let me, I don't want to muddle it up anymore, but, uh, very simply, um, Hans is not under any investigation, he meets the criteria to do this, the mayor just had asked that, he wanted to be the one to sign this resolution. Um, and, um, it definitely covers Hans Ottenot, in my opinion, and I think my opinion is correct on this.
Okay, that's what...
So we just, we just want to make a motion here that it does, it does cover Mr. Ottenot, just so that we're...
That's it.
So just...
Probably and on the same page about that, that there is, that this, this resolution is effective and it covers, uh, Mr. Ottenot and his charter position.
So to the record, let's just make the motion to, um, make the policy change effective to cover the position, um, charter position?
It's already stated, I think Chris clarified, it's just a motion to cover Mr. Ottenot, it's fine. Okay?
Policy change covers charter position of Hans Adenot.
Yeah, that's it.
That's it.
Yeah, same thing Chris said.
Policy position covers Mr. Ottenot, okay.
Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, ten M? A resolution appointing Julia Gorkova as interim city attorney and Latoya Brown as interim deputy city attorney pending the appointment of a permanent city attorney by the commission.
Mr. Brodsky, did you want to speak?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, so I re, I will revert to my, uh, original request, uh, that the commission provide clarification to Mr. Ottenot as to whether, uh, his, uh, retirement is going to be honored, if he has been, his, uh, employment has been terminated, whether he is going to be able to serve, uh, or have his, uh, retirement effective as of, uh, February seventh, and his, uh, he'll be paid his salary through that time and be entitled to his benefits. Uh, I just think it's a little unclear based on what happened yesterday, uh, as to what Mr. Ottenot's, uh, current status is, especially in light of the, um, resolution that's currently before the commission.
Um, can I say something, just to point out the language of the resolution? That the resolution states that Hans Adenot has announced his retirement as of February seventh, and city commission has accepted his resignation.
The, the one, I would, I would just point out, um, Madam City Attorney, that it says that he had, um, uh, accepted his resignation, Mr. Ottenot retired, that he did not resign, which is different.
It is different, I think it's different, and I, and in my opinion, he did not retire. He is no longer wanting to work in, in government, which is his right to do so, and that's great. He wants to get another job, okay, go get another job. That's called switching jobs, that's not retirement. He resigned, and we accepted that resignation. I, I don't believe that, um, that he's, uh, he doesn't, he doesn't meet the criteria for retirement, he's not over sixty-two years old, he hasn't served more than thirty years. Um, I read the, the, um, the, um, Attorney General opinion that was provided, I pulled the statute, that, uh, the twenty-eighteen statute, that also defines retirement that way. That, that means that you either retire, you start, uh, you, whether you go through FRS or you don't, and you don't continue a full-time employment somewhere else. I mean, that's retirement. He's choosing to retire from public work, okay. That's, like, you know, a use of language, but it doesn't make you retired, it makes you somebody who's switching jobs. So if that's the clarification you're seeking from me, I think I've answered your question.
Mr. Brodsky, you, you started in the beginning, um, saying very nice things about, um, Mr. Ottenot, and I think that everyone here would agree with you, he's, he's done a fine job working for the city, and, um, he's not, as the city manager made clear, not under investigation, he wasn't asked to leave, he simply resigned to go work next, you know, a few doors down, uh, for one of our businesses, and we wish him the best. Um, this is not in, in any way a reflection of, of him, this was his choice, uh, and I, I agree with Commissioner Viscara, this, based on the statute, it's not a retirement, he has resigned, um, but he is going to be eligible for the, the benefits as we discussed.
Thanks to the policy changes that we're making.
Exactly.
I, I don't, um, Commissioner Viscara, I don't want to get into legal debate with you about whether Mr. Ottenot retired or resigned, I'm not sure that's a productive use of our time, but I, I would...
But that's the distinction you're trying to make with us.
I think for the purpose of the resolution, I can make a suggestion to, um, substitute language as a separation from the city in both paragraphs, first and the second. This was just simply acknowledging the separation from the city, um, as of February seventh.
I, I think that would appro, be appropriate, uh, especially because there's, uh, a disagreement between Mr. Ottenot and at least some members of the commission with respect to, uh, the legal status of Mr. Ottenot's separation, sort of avoids, uh, some sticky language. And I guess the additional point for clarification and, um, Ms. Viscara, that, uh, Mr. Ottenot's, um, separation will be effective February sixth, and that the city will continue to honor his, uh, rights as an employee and the benefits and salary to which he's entitled through that date, February seventh, excuse me.
February seventh, that's what the resolution clearly states, so...
Okay.
So we can, um, make a motion to amend the resolution, read it in record.
But why do we need to amend the resolution?
We, we're substituting the language for separation to avoid the inconsistency in language between the retirement and resignation, we're substituting the separation with the city.
Okay.
I, I'll, I'll, I'll move, I'll make a, I'll mo, I'll move to, if, I'll make a motion for that.
So we're just stating on the record the motion to substitute the first...
Motion to substitute separation of service for retirement or resignation? Resignation.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I just need to clarify one more time. So in the first whereas clause, are we substituting the word retirement for separation?
Exactly, and the second, second whereas clause, we're substituting resignation for separation, and if you want to dispute...
Want to read in the record the way the two clauses will...
I can read the whole resolution into the record if that makes it any easier.
Yes, please, Mauricio.
Please do.
Okay, so, "A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, appointing Julia Gorkova as interim city attorney and Latoya Brown as interim deputy city attorney pending the appointment of a permanent city attorney by the city commission, providing the mayor and city manager with the authority to do all things necessary to effectuate the terms of this resolution, providing for an effective date. Whereas after over eighteen years of dedicated service, city attorney Hans Adenot has announced his separation from the city as of February seventh, two thousand and nineteen. And whereas the city commission has accepted his separation and shall select and appoint a new city attorney, and whereas the city is in need of an interim legal services and legal advice, and whereas the city wishes to appoint an interim city attorney and interim deputy city attorney until such time as a permanent city attorney is appointed. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida as follows. Section one, incorporation of recitals. All recitals set forth herein are incorporated into this resolution. Section two, appointment of interim city attorney. City commission hereby appoints Julia Gorkova as interim city attorney with a salary increase of ten percent from her base salary. Section three, appointment of interim deputy city attorney. City commission hereby appoints Latoya Brown as interim deputy city attorney with a salary increase of ten percent from her base salary. Section four, authoriz, authorization of mayor and city manager. The mayor and city manager are hereby authorized to do all things necessary to effectuate the terms of this resolution. Section five, effective date. This resolution will become effective upon signature of the mayor." So can I have your motion?
So who?
Second.
Second.
The presiding, um, officer cannot second the motion, so I don't...
No, I'm, I'm asking them if who wants to second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure. Uh, I want to thank the commission, the mayor, served two mayors, served so many commissioners, uh, I lost my hair in the process, uh, it's been a great ride. I think we made a better community since the community that I started in two thousand, and, uh, good luck, uh, to staff, uh, especially to the two young ladies that I love in my office, you're gonna do great, you know? Uh, you can call me, uh, unless there's a trouble issue, don't call me, I'm free, okay? Uh, but it's been great, I love you guys.
And I just, don't go, 'cause, who wants to talk? 'Cause I want to say something.
Yeah, well, I'd, I'd like to go first. Um, I've had a rough couple of days, but, um, I just want to say, I, I wish Hans all the best, um, not just success, um, I wish him health and happiness, especially for his entire family, and, um, uh, you know, we're gonna be here, still love you, and, uh, I just want you to know that I really do sincerely wish you the absolute best going forward.
Thank you, Chris, uh, we've been together for two stint, uh, as city manager, and it's the second time around. I think, uh, you know, not like family, family fight, but when family fight is over, is over, and we love each other, okay?
Jennifer, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to thank you, I mean, I, I obviously, I, I have my, my, uh, my opinions on, on certain language, but that's...
You're a lawyer just like me.
I can't help myself. But, um, but I do wish you the best, and I didn't get a chance to work with you, uh, you know, in this capacity very much, but I, I wish you the best in your new endeavors, to you and your family.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Dana?
No words could adequately express the debt of gratitude that the staff, that the city, that the residents, that the stakeholders, that the commission, and myself personally, the debt of gratitude that we have to you for your selfless service and your dedication to this city, and your representation, and your sacrifices, and everything that you have done. We really owe you a great debt of gratitude for what you've done for this city and for all of us, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Goldman, uh, this, you know, uh, it's been a pleasure working with all the commissioners, and basically I have, I've been able to gain friends for life, and you're one of them, okay?
Duly noted.
Alex, do you want to see?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, it was too short for me. But I'm sure, I'm sure we're gonna see each other again, and, um, you know, I'm sure we'll be hanging out.
I agree, Alex, uh, Commissioner Lama, let me be formal. Uh, it's, it's, uh, you know, the, the time obviously was, was appropriate for me to venture in private sector and retire. Uh, you know, it, it's, it's, it's working, uh, and obviously, you know, even though I didn't get an opportunity to work with you, uh, I still have, you know, I have served as city attorney at North Miami, Miami Gardens, and, and I have lecturer on ethics with a number of municipalities, I still have elected officials still calling me for advice, so feel free to call me, I will be objective, I'm not gonna criticize anyone, I just give you information and you make the call, okay?
I get to go last.
Okay.
Uh, Hans, thank you so much for, for everything, for, for your mentorship, for, uh, our chats. Uh, I, I'm probably not the only person that you spend a lot of hours with giving advice, uh, especially as it relates to our mutual, uh, admiration and respect for, for immigrants. Uh, Julia and I already spoke, we're gonna continue what we, we started, you, you, uh, you left a very good team behind, I want to congratulate them, uh, it's great to have more women sitting up here, no offense, uh, but that's because you, you brought them on, so you, you will be missed, uh, but we know that we will see you around, 'cause you literally will be down, down the street. So thank you very much for everything.
Vice Mayor Satchin, first of all, I want to, I want to thank that young lady, stand up Jasmine, you know, it, it would be a big mistake for me to recognize Jasmine. Because, uh, I think staff know, and, and the current, uh, members of the city commission know, we couldn't be successful without her, and I'm gonna miss her. Uh, luckily I'm down the street, at least now I could pay for lunch Jasmine, okay? Uh, with respect to our relationship, uh, Vice Mayor, look, it's been a great four years, we, we went beyond just, uh, local government issues to help this community, and, uh, you know, I want to say, I want to note for the record, and this commission to just take credit, uh, you made history tonight. You know, when I became a city attorney of North Miami in two thousand and five, I was the first Haitian-American city attorney in North Miami. Tonight, you have the first Russian-American city attorney, congratulations.
Thank you, Hans.
Thank you, love you guys, okay?
Thank you, Hans. Okay, so we have some speakers.
Just to note for the record, Vice Mayor, we're now on item thirteen, which is the citizens' forum.
Thank you. Tough one. Uh, Ms. Maya Nilla?
I'm resident of...
If you could lo, lower it, please, so we can, yeah, your name and your address.
He was told.
Yeah, your name and your address, please.
Thank you, Larissa, I know. I'm resident at, uh, Merian Towers, and everybody knows, uh, our building have a construction now, reconstruction now, whatever you call it, it's so terrible. Terrible, six months, I live in this part, then they start doing first line. So many dust, nobody cleaning. Today even, I check it before I come here, nobody clean. They made balcony doors three days ago, and balcony can go, all, all stuff they left over there, it's terrible, okay? Another questions, we need... It's terrible. Okay. Another questions, we need letter from, from construction company, true letters, when they gonna finish? Because six months already, nobody finished first line, twenty-fourth apartment, from two to seventh floor. And why they starting construction? They coming, workers, seven o'clock AM. Seven o'clock AM, nobody, buildings, no building let construct, people come before nine o'clock. They starting, seven o'clock, make noises, fifteen minutes, and then nobody around, nobody around until three o'clock. Three o'clock a beg, no, no, no noises. Three toing, everybody leaving forever, for all day. This is terrible. We just need to know how long it's gonna be. Because I count, if they doing six or ten months first line, so all build, buildings, they will do in nine, ten years. So, please let the contractors send us true, true letter, how long it's gonna be, clean after, the workers, what they doing every day, you know, it's dust. I, I know, because I live with the dust around. And why is wires around? They broke the ceiling. Wires come down, and you had, very nice, you know, like a tree, you know, tree. Okay, I'm probably normal. I'm not gonna touch, but another people who lives over there, some people not normal. They walking with the cane, they not normal. They could touch this fire and make fire. We could have big fire in this building. Please help us finish this problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maya. Alicia LeBlanc? Alicia LeBlanc?
Thank you. I have to talk in Spanish, because my English is, is very poor. If somebody translate my-
I'll translate for you.
You translate.
We can't, we, we can't.
We can, you can translate. You can try to translate, I mean, hopefully.
Soy vecina de la señora que acaba de, que acaba de hablar. Vivimos en el mismo building.
In the same building.
Desde hace seis meses tenemos la situación que ella, ella acaba de explicar.
We've had that situation she explained for six months.
No sabemos nosotros, somos personas de la tercera edad. Muchas somos alérgicas, tenemos problemas-
Many of us are senior citizens, many of us are allergic.
Tenemos problemas con el polvo. El ruido es insoportable desde el amanecer hasta las seis o las siete de la noche.
And the noise is unbearable from early in the morning until-
Incluyendo los sábados.
Including Saturdays.
Entonces, no sabemos qué hacer, cuáles, qué derechos tenemos, cómo nos pueden proteger.
We don't know our rights, how can we be protected?
Ese es el motivo por el que yo estoy aquí. Porque quiero saber hasta dónde podemos nosotros. Las promesas que nos hicieron al principio no se cumplieron.
Because whatever promises were made to us before have not been fulfilled.
Ellos nos iban a, a mudar para algún motel.
They were gonna move us to a motel.
Y nuestras pertenencias se iban a poner en unos stores.
Things were gonna be put in storage.
Durante la construcción del edificio.
During the construction.
Pero nada de lo prometido ha sucedido.
But nothing of the promises, none of the promises were fulfilled.
Por favor pedimos ayuda.
We're asking for your help.
Gracias.
Thank you. My Spanish is better than I thought. So, you don't need me? No, thank you very much. Thank you. And then we have one more speaker, Maya Rakous. Is there another Maya? Good evening.
Just my friend speak about Marion Towers.
Could you please state your name and your address?
My name is Maya Rakous.
Your address, please, for the record?
Marion Towers, 17505 North Bay Road. And again, about constructions. The first meeting before construction, they promise us that we will not suffer, and they will continue, will talk to us, explain, every, more meetings. Five months later, no meetings. Whereas then they start doing windows in the apartment where we live, because some people moved, they doing something. They start doing windows in apartment with the people. And when we ask managers, they say, she says, it's mandatory. It's hurricane windows. Our windows, two, twenty years that people lived on there, all hurricanes gone through, windows stay. I don't, I was not against windows. Wait until my time come, like in March, they will move me, and then do whatever you want with this building. The second one, we live in a dust. If you know, most of our, of you was in our building, you know how they go by section. They took four, four apartments in one section up to seventh floor. All other live in the same dust, in the same dirt, in the same wires, in the same, and people not only old, they very sick. My few, two friend is very sick with cancer, coming after chemo. In this section, they live where is going on the work. It's not right. I don't think so. I want to know our rights, do we have allowed them to do now this window? Do they supposed to work from seven to seven? In the middle, they just stop. They knock constantly. And this, and this, another one, it's, um, yeah, about dust, about windows, and can we have help from you? Could somebody check on it? Or telling us we're right or wrong? Do we have, if they knocking on door, I have to open the door and let them do whatever they want while I live in apartment. They promise us they're not going to do like this. Okay?
Thank, thank you, Maya.
Thank you very much. Listen to me.
Thank you. I, I know that the city manager and the assistant city manager have already been looking into it, and they're gonna, we're gonna get back to you, because we understand this is very serious.
After work, you would see, our dark floor, white, absolutely white. I'm scared of my dog, and I'm scared of myself, of my friend, and I don't think we, we live to the end of this reconstruct.
What floor do you live on?
A lot of Russian people talking to me, they say they want us all to die. Because they can't breathe in this, in this manner. I'm telling you, it's not just talking.
Which floor are you on? Which floor?
I'm on the second floor.
Second, yeah.
It's more or less, I can breathe so far. I don't know till, to what time, honestly.
Okay.
Please.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for, for, for coming today. We, this is already on our radar, and we are going to get back to you. Stan, I think that you've met with the building.
Yes, I've, I've met with numerous residents from Marion Towers. Our building inspectors and code enforcement department have been out there numerous time, numerous times. We've confirmed that all their permits are in order. I spoke to the building official as late as today, and we spoke about the conditions there. He's going to ensure that all of our inspectors go to the property daily if we have to, to make sure that the concerns that were brought up tonight are taken care of.
Thank you. Thank you. No, that's it. No, I've got only three.
He, he chose not to speak. What's your name? No, I didn't see a Freddie Howard in the notes.
Do you want to fill out a form?
You can just come up to, to the podium.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Commissioners. I'm here tonight also for Marion Towers.
Your name, please.
Freddie Howard.
And your address, please, for the record, too.
I want to thank especially Mr. City Manager, he's being aware of what's going on, Mr. Deputy Manager, and Alex, we've been talking, Mr. Lama, I'm sorry. The situation is very critical in Marion Towers, mainly because they feel the people, elderly people, they feel intimidated, they're afraid. In many cases, they've been told if they don't cooperate, like Nazi Germany, or communist Russia, or communist Cuba. We're in a democracy. People have rights. They feel intimidated constantly. They're afraid. It's not only the condition in which we, they are living, but the way that they're being treated, that is really shameful. When they ask questions, they answer to them, sometimes screaming, okay? Mr. Deputy City Manager has told us that he will be sending inspectors, which they do. They go in, come back out. I don't know what's happening. They do have permits, as far as I'm concerned. It's the way that they are developing the whole situation. For instance, they come in seven o'clock in the morning, "Oh, yeah, do, ah!" screaming to begin with. Second, the noise, which is normal under construction. Then, we don't know who's coming in and out of the building, okay? They don't care about the elder. They don't care about the residents. It's the way that they're acting, the way that they're doing the job. After they finish the construction in a day, they leave everything hanging. You go to the office, they blame the, the construction company. The construction company, they say they're not even supposed to talk to us, and they're gonna, who knows who's gonna do it. So, my main concern is that the people are afraid. They don't know which rights do they have. They're intimidated constantly. "Well, if you don't do this, we're gonna kick you out of here." I didn't hear personally from somebody saying that to a resident, but a lot of residents talking. Most of these people are wandering at night, because they were supposed to move residents from one apartment to an empty apartment, or they were to accommodate them into a location while this situation was happening. We had a meeting, I have it on tape, and it's totally the opposite of what they're doing. At the beginning, it was kind of okay. They were moving people from a close, from a, a empty apartment, from their apartments to an empty one. That was a different company taking care of the situation. It was a moving company. They were fine, because the people, they were going crazy. They didn't know what was going on. People were saying the building was sold. Nobody was told what was really happening. The building has been sold forty-one percent, and Catholic Housing Management still manage the, the building. So, the situation is really unbearable. I can deal with the fact that remodeling is good, you know, it's gonna be an improvement for the building, for the area. But in the meantime, they're treating these people as disposable ones, like, okay, like now they're changing windows in the apartments, they're coming and knocking at the door of the residents. It feels like they don't really have a say. They just, supposedly, they're supposed to ask them whether they can come in or not. So, after, so, well, we asked them. But while they're at it, the person that is in the apartment usually don't speak the language. They're afraid, most of all, they're afraid. So, they walk into the apartment, while they're in there, they will be wandering around the whole building. We have no place to go while they're working on the windows, okay? Yes, the inspectors, I see them coming in and out. Yeah, they have permits. But it would be nice if somebody goes like a mystery shopper, perhaps, yeah, and leave the whole day there just to see what's going on, okay? They start at seven in the morning screaming, they're rushing in and out of the parking lot, their parking where they're not supposed to park. We have elderly people there. They can get raped. They can, a lady told me today, "Chee, mira," it's a lady from, I said, "They took my broom." So, I said, "What don't you go?" "Ah, what are we gonna do?" That's all they say constantly. "What are we going to do? We don't know what to do." They are afraid. And we're in the US of Great America, and people shouldn't be afraid in any location where they're living, their retirees, their logo. If you look into the website of the Catholic Housing Management, they say, "We want to supply elderly with a pleasant atmosphere, healthy for their soul, for the envi-" and they're not doing that. They scream at them, okay? Not really, not only the construction. They're intimidating. I was called an instigator, and I'm not instigating. I said, "You haven't seen an instigator yet." I'm not an instigator, I'm just trying. These people don't have a voice. I'm sixty-six. I know I look younger, and I have all the energy, and I am willing to advocate for these people, even if I have to be crucified.
Thank you.
And I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Appreciate that. And, and, and we will definitely look into that. So, with that, we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We should adjourn?
No, we're staying. Second.
We're staying. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we adjourned. Thank you.